Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So Yakub is not going to be able to be here today with us. And I think we are just starting with the superintendent's update in the wayfinding project.
Great. I'm going to invite Fred Leonardo to join us, our community development director. And he had sent information along about this project a few months back and is here to talk a little bit about it. And I think just kind of get a sense of, you know, your thoughts and feelings about it. So I will queue up the stuff and I'm going to Vanowite it from here.
Sure. Thank you. Fred Leonardo, Community Development Director for the town. I appreciate you having me here tonight to discuss this. So if I can just give you a brief history on this, if it's helpful. The town received earmark funds from the state to do a wayfinding and branding campaign. So we've done that in the last six months of the year. The final design, and I'll pass this around to the board too. As a sample of the kind of design, color is not right. But so the final design came out with this symbol, a logo, if you will, for the town. The SLAC board has been presenting this and they're supportive of this. You will see that, so the branding is to kind of give recognition to the town. Townwide has replaced signs throughout the town. And the wayfinding part is to give direction to people as they go around town. If you can just scroll through that quickly, you'll see some of the... That's the logo itself. So the final winner, if you will, was to use that symbol that you're seeing with a range of red as the main predominant color for the sign. And if you just pose it different, those would be the different locations throughout town. And that's what the signs would look like. There's one specifically that you'll see for the school. Those are the wayfindings, so those would be out throughout different parts of the town. You can just kind of scroll through those, sorry. So that was the whole campaign. What you're seeing very briefly in the history of this is the different locations throughout town. It'd be some monikers or some directional signs for the schools, like the high school, for instance. There is one very specific one that shows like the high school.
We'll get there.
Yeah, it's on a different side too, but it should be in these.
Oh, wait, hold on. Maybe it's this other, might be this.
It's on, it is on the separate one, sorry.
No, it's good.
This would be an example of what, and so let me also say that we're not asking the school to make any changes to the signs. What the thought is and what I needed, not needed, but the SLAC board has asked if we can get feedback from the different boards and committees that have jurisdiction. Obviously, this committee has jurisdiction over the school properties. So in the future, for whatever reason, you were going to replace a sign for one of the schools, the request would be is that you use this type of a sign with the color, that logo, the shape. The size would vary depending on the school and what you wanted to do. Same way with the mounting. So in this case, like the high school, you already have like brick there, that brick structure. You'd probably reuse that. So the thought tonight is I'm just trying to get feedback from this committee. You're not asked to be replacing the signs, to be clear. Nobody's saying that to replace any of your signs, you may never replace any of the school signs, but in the future, if for whatever reason, one of those signs were to be replaced, it'd be, it'd be nice if this committee would support that general outline.
I mean, I don't think that, do you want me to start? I could start with you, actually, if you want to go ahead.
Good evening. I guess my only, I think it's a great idea. I think the fact that these are, you know, designed style to match wherever we put them. And I don't see a problem with using this particular style of sign, say, along the street. But the sign that is in the brick structure that you mentioned originally was a class gift to the school, even though it's been replaced, but pretty much replaced in kind. And so I would certainly have a concern about that unless we went back to the class that gave it to us to see if they would accept the change. This design is very close to what's there. So, but until we heard from the class, I would certainly suggest that we leave it alone until there is a reason to replace it, particularly with a different style.
Well, right, and just to be clear, nobody's asking.
Yeah, I understand.
So that...
But I just thought this, I put it out so everybody would have the additional information about how that sign got there. And as I said, I think we all know it's been stolen once and damaged once. But pretty much it would put back the way the original gift was.
Yeah, there would be some impetus not to change it in that case. That would make sense.
Yep. But I think it's a great idea. And, you know, obviously, it sort of is a friendly setup across the town with informational signs. You know, as towns get bigger and bigger, you can't find anything. You can't find street numbers to find the building you want on the street and everything else. So I think, I think it's a very good idea.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Jane?
Yeah. I agree, and I think the class would probably be thrilled to incorporate this. And I didn't know about this project. It's really cool. And it's, I love towns when you go in and there's all this uniformity in the signs. So I think it's great. We'll have it.
Sure. Thank you.
Tim?
Sure. Awesome. No real questions. Thank you for all your work on this. Actually, sorry, just one quick question for Allison. So I'm assuming would this be handled by Kelly, just any future sign updates and things like that? Is that correct?
Yeah, go through buildings and grounds, yeah.
Jerry, do you have anything? Okay. I mean, I don't have any principal, like, opposition to it. I just think that, you know, I would prefer to wait until we have, when it needs to be changed, and then we would phase it in, sort of. Otherwise, then it would be a project across all the schools and it's just additional. And of course, the sentimental piece of the fact that this was given by the class, I would prefer to wait it out. But, you know, I don't think I have any opposition to it, open to doing it. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I do, maybe absolutely not being asked to replace anything, though.
Yeah.
It would certainly be, you may never do one of your signs.
Right.
So you may not have an occasion to actually put one of these signs up. It would be only if there was an occasion or for one, some reason, the town had money to give to replace the signs. But we don't anticipate that. We do have some grant money to replace, to actually put some directional signs in. But we're not looking to do individual buildings at this point.
And we may have an opportunity to actually, when we're talking about the high school, there's two entrances to the high school. So we may be able to incorporate it, since we don't have, I don't think signage on the other side, we may be able to, if we were to decide to put signs there, use this, and that would be one way. So I'm open to it.
Yeah, I think the most likely candidate for, in the sort of near distant future, would be at Hastings. Kind of as we look at that parking lot and kind of reconfiguration and possible kind of driveway things happening there. And that, that sign is, is among the signs probably due for replacement. So that could be a part of that project. So my guess is, if I had very gambling sort, I would say that's the one most likely to come up first. So.
See?
Yeah, I was just wondering whether there's funds already available for sign replacements wherever you need to, or whether, let's say, as we just discussed, if we needed a new sign at Hastings, whether the school department would have to pay for it.
Well, so likely the school department would have to pay for the signs. We do have an additional $70,000 in grant money for the town. But those are, some of the money is designed for the actual construction of the signs. And the other money, of that 70 is for the installation of signs. But we, the Economic Development Director, coordinator right now, Lara Crawford and myself are looking at that. We're going to give a presentation through SLAC board. But those would probably, at least initially, go to a lot more of the directional signage, because we don't have any of that or very, very little of it in town. So the first trough of money, if you will, is not likely to go to individual building signs, because they're not, well, we'll see what the SLAC board says on that, because they'll have jurisdiction on a lot of that. But I doubt we'll have enough money to get to schools or any of the other buildings in town. I wish we did, and we could offer that.
Get it all done at once, right?
Yeah, but that's not to say that the town won't come into grant money or other money in the future. That's why I say if the opportunity presents, or if you had another class gift, for instance, somebody wanted to give you a class gift, you want to present the sign, that would be a great opportunity then, too. But we'll certainly keep that in mind if we do have more grant money, that we'd make that offer, certainly.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think the next item is a budget update.
That's great. Before I dive in, so we've got a couple of things. A budget update, proposed calendar, and a new policy proposal. I'm going to kind of march through all of those in a little bit. I have a couple of quick, other fun things to sort of put on your radar. One, I just wanted to note that, where is it here? Oh, we are in the middle of a major drive for the veterans. It's a clothing and toiletry drive, and tomorrow is the last day. So I wanted to kind of get the word out about that. It is, there's a list of items that are most needed, and there are drop offs in any of the school locations. So you can see here, in addition to the police station, fire station, town hall, and post 22, and the senior center. So it's a big, kind of, kind of big outreach on behalf of veterans in town. And all these donations go to a collection point at Mill Pond, and then they're delivered to Worcester. And we have, as you know, there'll be a breakfast in celebration of the kind of whole event right before Thanksgiving, so. So that was one thing. The other thing is a reminder to folks that the Turkey Trot is on Saturday. So folks who want to walk, like me, or run, like other people, it's a 5K event. I'm hoping the weather will be good, and it should be a lot of fun. Proceeds benefit projects in the school, so I definitely want to plug that here. And the third thing I wanted to say, took place last night. Matt and I had the chance to attend this, the math department in the high school. Cindy Manini, and who's the head of math and business, put on this documentary film called Count It Out. And it's really sort of an argument for the best possible math education we can muster in the U.S. And almost like a mandate for some change in how we do math education because of the importance of math knowledge for citizens in today's, today's world. It was a really interesting, thought provoking film. My favorite part of it, there was a scene where some students are probably like 10, 11 years old. In March of 2020, they are in math class, and their teacher in their math class in March of 2020, they've noticed this thing called a pandemic is happening, and they're learning about exponential growth. And the kids basically do the math, and in that moment realize kind of what the timeline is for the pandemic to reach the entire globe. It was a tremendous kind of example of how you can kind of make math very relevant, very real, and very kind of interesting for students, which can really drive engagement over time. So wonderful effort by the part of the math department. So just a couple of quick shout outs for me before we dive into budget, which is a little less, a little less fun, I'd say.
It's math, right?
So I shared a, an update in the form of a draft executive summary with you. I'm going to kind of run through slides that break that down this evening. With the caveat that this is a draft, I'll be back to present sort of final version in a few weeks at the budget hearing, and then you'll have an opportunity to vote later in December. And this is the best draft we're able to do right now with the information that we have. So there are things that can shift, and I'll sort of point those out as we go. So first of all, I want to say, you know, when we put together the budget, we really have our mission statement in mind, which is we really want all students to reach their potential as creative thinkers, collaborative problem solvers, and compassionate, engaged citizens. And we also want to create a budget that is sustainable, that's fiscally responsible, and can kind of keep us moving forward in a way that doesn't overburden the town so that they can kind of keep coming back to us. Our approach, based on the budget summit, was to put together a level services budget. And the bottom line here is we came up with about $400 in reductions that still maintain level services. They maintain class sizes, they maintain programs and services. And that level services number, we are estimating right now at 4.17 increase over FY '26. And I want to point out, this is lower than the average of those three years prior to the pandemic. So if you look at FY '17 through FY '19, and you average those out, 4.17 is coming in lower. So it's kind of trending in a direction that's more sustainable, which is what we were trying to do. You all don't need these reminders. I put these in for the general public. But, you know, the MCAS performance here indicates where we're really doing well by our students, as does SATs and other kinds of national and local, regional recognitions. And we're continuing to work on all of those efforts. Beyond that, our kids are doing great across all these things that make a school wonderful. And I always want to talk about this because I think the experience of the Westboro schools doesn't come down to just academic performance. It comes down to the arts and extracurriculars and athletics, and all the things that kids do to volunteer and give back to their community. It's become very clear to me that people want to preserve all those things to the greatest degree possible, no matter what happens. So level services requires us to do a few things. First, we want to maintain the programs and services that we have right now. But we also have some things that just cost more money year over year. One of those is meeting our contractual obligations. So we have salary increases that are required by collective bargaining agreements. And those agreements include oftentimes step increases, sometimes lane changes, as well as a cost of living adjustment. We also have mandated special education costs. And as I've talked about before, the cost of out of district tuition in particular is a big driver in the budget these days, tuition as well as transportation. And then there are these other non-discretionary increases that we're dealing with in inflation. So rising costs for software services, contracts, utilities, transportation services. So all of that goes into level services, which is why, you know, we can do the same thing, but it always costs a little bit more money. So here's the sort of big numbers again, in bigger font and a different format. So you get, the total budget costs $73.4 million. It's about 2.9 over last year. And there's the percentage of growth. And there's kind of a chart that shows it too in context. So you can see, you know, this is sort of more comparable to what you see in FY '17 to FY '19. It dips down in FY '20 and '21 because of pandemic related things. So first of all, we didn't have school and didn't have to pay for transportation for a while. So the budget kind of shrank back then. Additionally, you've got FY '21, that would have been FY '21, the return to school. There was this infusion of federal money. So we had grant dollars and things coming in to kind of help us reopen school. But then you see this sort of rebound post pandemic as we're trying to do all the things to support kids and their needs post pandemic. So what I think this story tells us is that we're kind of coming out of it. We're back to a place that's a little more stable, and where we'll be able to sort of grow at a reasonable, kind of steady pace, and work toward our strategic priorities without kind of having the budget in that over 5% range, right? Just a reminder, schools are all about people, and the majority of our people are faculty. So teachers, nurses, counselors, other direct service providers who work with students. We also have a lot of paraprofessionals to provide additional support to students. I want to make a note about administration. I know last year, this is a topic of conversation, is there too much administration? And I did a little looking around, and I want to say, you know, the data broadly in the rest of the universe, if you look at sort of middle management in the rest of America, it's at about 13% of typical companies, according to the Harvard Business Review. And I think they usually do a pretty good job. You know, I think schools are fairly lean on this front. It's a big organization with a lot of people and a lot of things to do. And it takes leadership to do those things. So I want to make it clear that those are important positions. And additionally, the little 32 there is for facilities and grounds. So we've got other staff that aren't reflected here. Our folks like food services and our community ed and coaches, those are all being paid out of revolving accounts. This graph looks very similar to last year, this pie chart. Not a lot of shifting here. So we said last year, the biggest budget driver for us is salary, and that remains true. And the number is almost dead even with where we were last year. But just over 80% of our budget is tied up in salary. So typically, when people look for budget reductions, the only real thing we have at our disposal is salary. So this is just a rundown of our recent contract settlement. You all are aware of this. We are in year three, so school year '25, '26, of a three-year contract. And the largest of our units is the Westwood Educators Association. We are currently in negotiating, negotiations with them again. And we will be negotiating with all of our bargaining units this year. One of the things to be aware of is because we're in negotiations, we don't have a solid number for the COLA increase or for some of those other costs yet. So we're having to put sort of placeholders or estimates in place. In order to do that, we look at things like the past, and we look at other communities and try and do our best sort of guesstimating. And hopefully, we're coming in at a number that's about where we can land. Okay? So in terms of our approach to salary, this year, we took this FY '26 budget as a start. We did all the roll over. If we took that same group of people and added COLA longevity steps and lanes, the salary that would be about a 4.55% of that budget item. We did look at where our population and enrollment is, and it looks like we can make about $400,000 in reductions. Again, we've got declining enrollment, and those are reductions we are very confident we can make without impacting programming. And by doing that, we bring that salary budget down slightly and the increase percentage down slightly. Once again, we are committed to doing everything we can to do that reduction through reconfiguration and attrition as much as possible. And, you know, that $400,000 is obviously kind of a rough number, but it's our best guess about where we're going to land. Because we are in negotiations and because this is a little early yet, we're not going to articulate which positions yet, but we will have more clarity about that by the time I come back in a couple of weeks, I hope. Just a reminder about enrollment. You saw this chart earlier this year. We are down this year, and because of that trend and how it moves, it has some implications for us as we think ahead for the next several years. This is what it looks like when you break down our current enrollment by grade level. And you can kind of see, the left hand of the, left side of the bar graph is, the numbers are just lower. And so as that group moves up, we're going to see an overall kind of trend downward in terms of our enrollment. One thing to note that's tricky, and we'll have to look at in the years ahead, is as that lower enrollment moves to the middle in high school, where you have more kind of elective offerings and things that are sort of specific and programmatic, it gets harder and harder to maintain programs with low enrollment, because just the number of kids in them may not justify holding a section. So, and that's really part of our decision making last year around Mandarin had to do with this. The low, low enrollment in Mandarin at the middle school was a reason that that was a viable option for reduction. Would love to get that back up, but, you know, until it is, we've got to make sure we're spending the money in the best possible place.
Just for clarity, you're talking more about like electives?
More about electives, right. Exactly. It is important to note here, too, around enrollment, there are a couple housing developments right now in the pipeline that are approved and moving. And there's another one that's sort of out there in the, being talked about in the universe, but not yet approved phase. That could really make a difference. So we could see our enrollment stabilize or even start to tick back up. It's, you know, the, the way that developers talk about these units, they are small. They're not designed for families. However, when you've got a good school system and you've got a kind of vibrant community, people move here and they make it work. So I would not be surprised to see some of those units yield more families than was anticipated by the developer. So major cost driver, and you've seen this before. This is a little different than the graph I showed last time, because this is actual total tuition cost as opposed to our tuition costs after, after circuit breaker, right? This is a total tuition cost that's including circuit breaker. So before, we were showing you just what was going to hit the general fund. So this is like the total, you know, price tag. Just so that there's awareness of what has happened in terms of out of district tuition over the last few years. And you can see the climb up, especially since FY '24 has been tremendous. And that's in part due to the Operational Services Division, which is the outfit that sort of sets the price increase limits for schools, has set some very high price increase limits. But above and beyond that, two other things have happened. One is that many of the schools have started charging separately for other services, for related services above and beyond tuition. So that tuition bill, that 3% increase can become a larger increase. And beyond that, some of the schools, we received two notifications along these lines from schools this year, have applied for a greater tuition increase by virtue of restructuring. So they say, we're going to restructure our program to better meet the needs of students. And it's kind of a workaround to that limit set by the Operational Services Division. So we've got a couple of schools where they're, I don't know, I'm trying to remember the ballpark. It was like, more like in the 15% to 20% increase range, so big jumps there. We are thinking a lot about what to do about that. You know, we don't set those prices, you know, and I've said this before. I think some of the out of district schools, they are facing a lot of the same pressures everyone else is. It's hard to hire, the cost of transportation has increased, the cost of service providers has increased. So it makes sense that the tuitions are going up. It's not, I don't say it as a sort of blame thing. So our responsibility in this case is really to think about, what do we do to really maximize our programming here? Make it as good as possible. So May Garvey, our new student services director, is working with her team to look at, what does the programming look like? Are there services in other areas where we can strengthen alignment or strengthen transitions? Because those are points that can be really tricky for kids as you move from one building to another. Oftentimes, those are the places where things get hard and, and where if it doesn't go well, it kind of sets the stage for the possibility of, of a request for out of district placement. Additionally, the State Superintendent's Association is really advocating strongly for an increase in circuit breaker. We're really pushing for 90% as opposed to 75% reimbursement. The state's facing a lot of requests for a lot of things, though. So as much as I think that is the number one priority that I've heard coming from the superintendents, it's our top priority. A lot of people have a lot of priorities, so I'm not holding my breath on that one. We're also starting to talk about the pre-K to K transition especially, looking at that. Because, you know, we receive about, only a fraction of students from our own programming, and a lot of students from, throughout other preschool programs. And what are the things that kids need in kindergarten as a foundation to help set the stage for future success? Because that feels like a really good investment area. So that's a thing we're exploring right now, too. Transportation, you're familiar with the escalations here. You know, we've seen fairly large one. This year, our in-town costs are not quite as, not quite, it's not quite as big a jump up because we're in year two of a contract and, or we're going into year two of a contract, and it's 2.44 as opposed to the 12.14 we had this year. Also notable, you know, I, our bus, per bus cost continues to be lower than some communities. So I think we're aware of that. And it's, it's an area that is starting to get attention at the state level. So the inspector general's office has started making inquiries about school transportation and special ed transportation in particular, because the human cry from districts has been pretty loud around this issue. This is a breakdown of the major budget categories. And this is all kind of just things that are in the, in the executive summary you received. So you can see a couple of things where, you know, special education is up, transportation is up, utilities are up. Those are areas we don't have a lot of control over. Those are a lot of mandated costs. Lot of non-salary is down. Salary, we kept under four by virtue of some reductions. And then buildings and grounds require some explanation. That 9.91 is slightly inflated. That nine-point-nine-one is slightly inflated for two reasons, actually. I think I wrote to you about one initially, but there are two. One is it includes fifty thousand dollars that we added as a potential need might arise for the high school roof repair, any sort of emergency repairs. We believe the high school roof, we were advised by the engineers that we should consider making sure we have funds available for that for next year in case we can't get started right away on that project. Additionally, there is some of the buildings and grounds budget that is offset from revolving, and we're trying to move things off of that reliance to the extent that we can. Capital projects. So we've got, this is the year of roofs, I think, is, is what we're talking about. So the high school roof is our biggest priority. It is the original roof from nineteen sixty-eight on that building, which makes it fifty-seven years old, which is pretty old. The engineers are telling us it is at the end of its life. It's definitely something that has some urgency behind it in terms of replacement. We would like to start that work as soon as we possibly can and get it done the summer of twenty-twenty-six, which is coming up soon. Along with that roof, you'll notice down below, MS, we would like to put forward for the town two projects as possible MSBA projects that are a little more long-term. So we would essentially ask for town approval of these projects this year, noting that we would apply for MSBA in January of twenty-seven. And these are not replacement projects, they're restoration projects. And so it's, they're less involved, but they're also ways to prolong the life of a roof in a way that's very fiscally responsible, because they're much less expensive, it's a more streamlined process. And through MSBA, we could potentially see around forty-nine percent reimbursement. We like the fact it's a less involved process, too, for renovation, that kind of, because it means the, the oversight part of the process may be less costly. As you're aware, when you involve with MSBA, you have to kind of go through a lot of hoop-jumping with them, because they have some oversight. But a restoration versus replacement, we think, may be a good way to access some of that reimbursement money. And then finally, the Gibbons has this little fieldhouse that's sort of sitting in the, in the center of the parking lot back there. And the roof, that roof is coming down, too. And currently, that building is not super-functional. It's being used for some equipment storage, for, storage for the fine arts program, for some like drama, you know, stuff for the stage and costumes. I have no, all sorts of things, I think. Instruments, maybe. We looked at the possibility of repair, but the reality is, we actually think it would be better to pull it down, kind of re, you know, reorganize, find other homes for the things that are in there, and then maybe capture that space as parking. The, so repair would be more costly, would be actually almost twice as much. So this seems like a more cost-effective way to go. It would kind of yield some potential good in terms of parking, and we could find a way to store everything that we need. So that's, that's that plan. I wanted to start a conversation out loud in public about the difference between level services and level funded. You all are very well aware of this, but I think because I heard about this a lot last year, it has cropped up as a topic again this year. I think it's really important for folks out, out there to know. Level services is what we do when we're, we're not going to do a lot of expansion or innovation. We're going to kind of maintain the quality that we have and try and roll over services and supports. And we want to keep our costs down to the extent possible, but we also want to maintain. Level funded would be to take our dollar amount from this year and try and fill the budget with the same dollar amount last year. Because we have increased costs in things that we do not control, if we were to do that, it would require the elimination of about thirty-five staff positions above and beyond the four-hundred thousand dollars that we already put in there, which is probably going to be about four or five staff positions. So just to be aware that those kinds of cuts are, are at the catastrophic level. It's not a viable option for the schools, not if we want to maintain the kind of programs and services and high quality that the community expects. So I will probably say that a few times during this season. I do also want to say this. Yeah, I mean, I think this would be year two of level services for us. And I think, I think it's a responsible thing to do right now. I think it's the right thing to do right now. But I don't think it's the right thing to do for much longer. And the reason is, we have articulated priorities, things that we want to do to get better as a school system. It is hard to make movement toward those priorities if we don't start to spend money on the things that we, that we're going to go after. So some of the things that were left on the cutting room floor in terms of possible opportunities for improvement or expansion, we talked about the possibility of adding paraprofessional support across all of our kindergartens, especially any, any kindergarten more than seventeen students. And again, that's part of that investment in the early grades, which can yield kind of more stability in the later grades. We're talking a little bit about the structure of our math support at the early grades. Right now, we're relying on intervention tutors at the, at the early grades, whereas on the literacy side, we have literacy specialists. We have invested in more literacy than math, but you know, to the point of Ms. Manini and the math department of the high school. Math is like, it's this incredibly important, powerful thing. It's, it's a real divider in society between access to a career that is going to sustain you in a viable way, or the ability to sort of make well-informed decisions as a citizen. So we want to really be investing in math the same way we invest in literacy. We're also interested in thinking about K-ten readiness. You know, helping our kids start early thinking about the, making good choices for themselves in terms of what they eat, trying to, you know, get them thinking about what it means to get outside and play and those kinds of things. How to navigate conflict. All, all those things can start really early and set a good foundation for later. Our high school had some opportunities that they wanted to explore in terms of expanding AP offerings, expanding broadcast journalism. Those are things, they are going to be doing a little bit by just sort of reallocating with AP, but I think we could do more if we were able to fund more, you know, frankly. And then, you know, technology and innovation. We're really interested in looking at the scope and sequence of our kind of technology instruction, kind of K to twelve, and thinking about the sort of support that's needed for classrooms, as well as what's happening in the earlier grades to have something that's more universal and consistent. So. I, I think this is a responsible budget. I think it's the right thing to do right now. And I do want to be clear, you know, you may hear something different from me next year. I may be back, you know, and saying, you know, it's time to move beyond level services at some point, you know. And I do that respectfully, you know, and we want to make sure it's something that the town can afford. And we will always, always look first at ways that we can kind of restructure and reallocate, because it's not always about spending more money. It might be about spending money differently. So. That is my budget update.
Thank you. I'm just going to go through and ask if anyone has any questions or comments. Steve, I'll start with you.
I don't know when I could bring this up, but certainly you mentioned in this discussion the fact that we have at least three major developments for which we're probably talking between four-hundred and six-hundred units of various numbers of bedrooms. But, you know, even at some of the historical statements from the planning board in regards to the number of kids that we get per unit, if we figure for a two-bedroom number of units, a kid and a half, and as you said, people can do what they can do in terms of being able to move into a place where they want to. So, I mean, the bottom line on this could be six-hundred kids in the school system, which would clearly reverse what we're seeing in the number of kids. So my point on this issue is that in the redistricting discussion, hopefully, our consultant will, number one, I guess, research what the number of kids projected by the planning board and others are versus what our real experience has been with some of the newer developments in town, and include that in there. For, for example, the failed school was designed for, I think, four-hundred-and-fifty kids, and it cost us fifty-four million dollars. If we had to build that school again, it would cost us a hundred-and-twenty million dollars. So I think it's important that not only does the school committee understand what the impact of additional kids in the system would be, potentially up to having to build a new school building, which would be a disaster these days, but at least that we on our end understand what we have to do if we have to house that number of kids in the school system. If you do a quick analysis of what it cost us per student, it cost us a little less than twenty thousand dollars a head for students in the school system, which generates the budgets that we're talking about so far. So the knowledge of the true impact for everybody in the town, including our taxpayers, is subject to what decisions we make, what the interest of the finance, excuse me, of the school committee and the administration is to support those kids at the level of education that we have tried to do for year over year over year. And it should not be a nonchalant response to, well, it's good to have buildings. Every time we build something in this town, whether it be a school or something else, it costs more money, and the impact is on services that have to be delivered by the town. And in construction, if we have to add police and fire and equipment, you know, to the, to the current organization of the town, that is an impact to the taxpayer. So all of this in review should be considered greatly. The other issue, I guess, is, is a surprise in regards to a commitment to demolish the fieldhouse at Gibbons. I would have expected to see a report of what's in there, you know, whose responsibility it is for what's in that building, getting, maintaining the space versus putting a roof on it, which we've kicked down the road. That is, the school committee and, in my years, have kicked it down the road because other roofs were more important. But the bottom line is, since we do have equipment that's in there, and granted, it may not all be school department stuff, there's going to have to be a place to put it if we demolish the building. And that's not a free cost. And so I would like to see a report to analyze both the building, the cost of the roof, the cost to, I guess, maintain the existing building versus the cost to store whatever else we have to in other places. If you drive around school property, you see that we have shipping containers that have stored stuff, particularly at the high school. If that's where we're going for Gibbons, I don't want to go there. I want to know upfront what the cost of demolition is going to be versus the cost to store the stuff somewhere else. So I don't know whether that's a commitment at this point and going to be a warrant article, but certainly I wouldn't vote for it until I see a report that is an honest analysis of what the true cost of the demolition would be in replacement space versus what it takes to fix this building, which, as I said, the, the school committee and administration has kicked down the road for a number of years on the basis of having to spend money somewhere else that's more important. So I wouldn't have been in that yet. I would like to see it, and hopefully, the rest of the committee would support it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jane, go ahead.
This was really thorough, Allison. Thank you so much for putting it all together. And I like the tabs. It's nice to be able to click through it like that. But, so one thing I was just wondering, we didn't actually have a level services budget last year, did we? Didn't we end up having to cut it a little bit?
We did have to cut, yes.
So, I mean, I think emphasizing that we're already coming back from, you know, we're already having to recover from the cut that we made last year. You know, so putting these two years together, we're still kind of below where we would have been. And I really appreciate all the work that you and your team has done to put this together. And I hope that the community will take a look at some of these. You know, this, this part about the cost of standing still, I think, is really impactful and kind of chilling. You know, I think many community members would want all of these things we have listed. And so I hope everyone will take a look at, you know, what the strategic priorities that we're not able to get to are if we have level services and, you know, really advocate for us to be at least at level services. So, thank you.
I did, you know, a recommendation that came to us. We met with our advisory finance committee, subcommittee members yesterday, and they had, they had recommended putting sort of dollar amounts next to these just so that if the community felt something's really important, they may want to pitch, may want to advocate for an increased budget. So.
That's a great idea.
Thank you for the presentation. Just a few questions. The first, I know you spoke briefly about some potential opportunities with early education and preschool. Are you just able to share any more about that?
In terms of thinking about the K-ten, the pre-K to K transition? So right now, the K-ten principals, the preschool director, director of student services are, they're kind of working together on looking at, you know, what makes it challenging for kids to make that leap, sort of trying to understand and what would help, right? So, for example, and for many of our students, they do it kind of seamlessly, and for some, they, they do not. Some of the things that we think impact that are, you know, the preschool is entirely co-taught. So every classroom has two certified educators in it. It's a very highly supportive environment. It's also an environment where the days are shorter, the week is shorter. And so there are things like that, that we're kind of thinking about. How do we sort of help kids transition from a shorter day with much, much more wraparound support to a longer day? And then they're, they're going to kind of get into the weeds of some of the programmatic stuff as well. It, it is where the, the notion of paraprofessional support in the kindergarten came from. It's actually a very typical structure in a lot of towns, and a little surprising, we don't have it here. It's unusual. So I think that's, that's a piece of it. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm curious as well. I understand that there's still a couple outstanding pieces, like the COLA adjustments that you were talking about. Do you have any general sense of how much variation there might be within this number, or how firm you think that it would, will be?
I, I can't really say at this point. I, I think I want to be thoughtful about being in bargaining and not kind of speculating too much. I, I will say, I think we are working with a very thoughtful educators' union, that they are, you know, they are advocating for their people, but they're also very mindful of the bigger picture. And it's, it's honestly kind of a privilege to work with them. I think they're a great group. So I'm hopeful we can come to agreement and, and really do something that both supports educators, but also keeps the budget workable for the community.
And then my last question. I know that there's some conversation about potentially new buildings, but currently, we're looking at a slight decrease in enrollments. I know that you said that we haven't, you haven't yet determined exactly the positions that might be cut if there were to be. But I'm just curious, would that potentially result in like a reduction, like an empty classroom essentially, like a physical classroom, or?
So I think it's, it could potentially result in that. It's going to depend a little bit on where those positions fall. I don't want to get into the, I will be able to talk more about that when we meet next in a couple of weeks. You know, part of why I want to hold off is, I think as we come closer to determining where those enrollment changes are, we need to have conversations with those educators, because I, I don't want them to find out through, you know, a public live TV conversation. So we would want to do that outreach first. But yes, it is possible that we may have some, an empty classroom or two in the district.
I guess I just ask because I just wonder about any potential opportunities there might be with that space to be, you know, potentially reutilized, but.
Yes, absolutely. You know, I know, for example, we have, two of our three K-ten schools have a Makerspace and one does not. We'd love to see that, you know, those kinds of things. We always want to look for ways to make sure our programs and services are equitable across the schools. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Allison. I think that it's a really wonderful report you put together. We appreciate the information. I just, I think that, you know, for me, the biggest piece here is what you mentioned, that you touched on about, you know, standing still, something that Jane also hit upon. We keep talking about level services and level funding. Really, you know, what we want to do is increase our capacity to serve the students in many, many more ways. I think it's a I think it's, you know, we're in unfortunate times. We have to be careful. I understand that. I know we're in negotiations, which, which is a whole nother piece of this that we have to keep our eye on. But, you know, we sit there and we will scrutinize test results and MCAS scores and these things. But in order to get to really the core of it is going, it's going to require resources, right, to help these students and to do the different things that you've not only mentioned here, but many other things. So I hope that, you know, the town supports us and I, I think they do. I think that we need to just remind people that it's not really just about what is level services. I, I think it's actually, it's really not level, actually. It's just a term. But you're actually just staying stagnant and that's, that's problematic. So I appreciate you bringing that forward. So thank you very much for the report.
You're welcome. I want to thank Anita, who has been like my true partner and just a wonderful kind of person in this, like, you know, on the phone with me at nine o'clock at night when I'm down in Hyannis, like helping me find numbers and make sure I've got it right. So, and her department has really done good work in terms of looking at, looking kind of at all the things. And, and they've taken on a lot, you know, we, we are still hoping to make this transition to a new chart of accounts this year. So it's, it's been a busy year for them. So, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? I know you spoke about like the decline in enrollment and given that decline, do you forecast additional, any additional cuts in the curriculum in the district, especially at the high school level?
That's a great question. Right now, no, we're not. I, I don't think we're, we've had conversations about things that would impact elective programming or anything. Like we, we did have to make some cut last year. The, the things that were programmatic was a little bit of cut to elective options at the high school last year and to Mandarin. And those are, those are really unfortunate. We're not talking about anything along those lines this year. So we're kind of looking in other places that are just more enrollment or kind of reconfiguration where we think we can kind of work on some of the same things, but do it a little more efficiently. So.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Yeah. All right, I think, let's see. Am I going to keep rolling here?
Yeah, definitely.
So I wanted to provide, show you, let me find that. I sent this out earlier and I also sort of reminded you, we had, I'd made a commitment to kind of reform a calendar committee to look at our school calendar. And the formation of our school calendar is a sort of bigger and more long-term project. That is something that's going to take time. We have done outreach and we have a, a very thoughtful group of educators who have expressed interest internally. My next step is to get word out to the community to find some community representatives. I know we've got a couple of people from school committee interested. And we will be starting that work, I hope, in December before the break. So we'll kind of launch that. I anticipate that being a project that takes, you know, most of this year with the eye to making recommendations back to the school committee next fall. In the meantime, I am rolling forward a calendar that's very similar to the calendar we have this year in a lot of ways. We've made a few changes, so I want to kind of highlight those. You know, first of all, just sort of learning from the process last year, we did try and whenever possible, kind of configure where the early release days were falling so that they're kind of falling before a three-day weekend. Basically to make them kind of more of a, less of a burden for parents, right? So that actually means it can be helpful for families. Additionally, we, for the professional development day in the spring, we kind of kept with what we were trying this year. So, and it's new this year, we added the day on to the Monday after February break, which again, it's a sort of same theory, you know, I think it's also, I think, going to be a great day for educators in that, you know, being able to come back and do professional development when you've had time off and are kind of well-rested and, and kind of refreshed is actually great. I had, I had the opportunity to do that in my former district. We used to have our Fall PD Day the Monday after Thanksgiving. And it was fantastic. I mean, people came back just, you know, happy and healthy and ready to learn. So. You'll also notice in March here, these are conference days, I think both of them. I'm not trying to remember here. Early release days. Yeah, these are both K to six days, conference days. And we kind of tinkered around with those and instead of having them on Fridays, we put them as adjacent to, again, adjacent to a, a release day, sort of holiday, as a way to just make it so that for families, there's sort of mitigate some of the impact of having those additional days. But those are only K to six days. And finally, I think, I think that's it. There is one typo on here we're aware of. Independence Day, there's a misspelling. But if you have any other feedback or thoughts, please feel free to share it with me and I leave it to you to either decide, to decide when and, when and how you want to accept this or, you know, talk about it more. That's it.
So I'll just make a comment. Actually, I think that there's one notable change here that I think is actually a very positive thing because I am very much for acknowledging and representation of all the holidays. So I see that this year you put Good Friday.
Oh, we did. Yeah, we moved, just moved Good Friday back to a day off.
That is a notable change and I think that that was something that is the right thing to do. And just like I think that honoring all of the, the holidays is the right thing to do, I, I appreciate that. So I'm happy with that and I'm ready to vote whenever the, the rest of the school committee members are ready to vote on this. Any comments on it or any preference?
No, I think, you know, it, it does model pretty much what we had last year. And I think the discussion that we had last year had to do with, you know, having a committee relook at everything because as we've tried to accommodate just about every religion to the best of our ability, there may be a time in the future where we can't do that. So the reconstitution of the, the school vacation and calendar days, I think is a good thing. But it will take time. It took a long time before. So. And I think in the meantime, this is a pretty good calendar. So I would support it.
Wonderful. If, yeah.
Just the, the one thing I, I noticed the March 9th, which I know it's a K through six. It looks like it's a K through six early release, which you just touched on. I think it'll just be good for us to get some feedback on if people like that day. Cause it is essentially for K through six families, it's a day and a half off, right, in the middle of the week? Cause they have an early release and then the next day.
It is a, and the reason for that is conferences. So.
So they have conferences.
So they'll have conferences on those. Some of them will have conferences either that day or night.
I mean, I know those half-days are like the bane of the calendar's existence and the family's existence sometimes. And I just wonder, I always thought on Fridays, sometimes there's a little more wiggle room for people. But, so I think it'll just be important for us to see if people like that.
Yeah, agreed.
And I, I know people will let us know. So.
Yeah, I, I do think that when it comes to the days, we'll get a whole range of opinions about what works and what doesn't. I do think that it's a good idea to kind of, to try and so long as it's not a huge problem for people to let the administration sort of identify the days that work best for PD in particular.
Yeah.
Just because I also imagine that there's a lot of scheduling involved in that and you want to space it out in certain ways and all of these things. So I'm not sure how much input they'll be able to accommodate. But, you know, your point is well taken. So.
I guess I would just say I appreciate the, the thought behind the, the updates to the calendar. I don't have any specific comments currently. I guess, I know we're just talking about the timeline. I guess I currently are, I personally would feel a little more comfortable allowing Akku to also provide comments before we voted. But no other comments to the calendar.
That's fine. So we can maybe vote at the next meeting?
Yeah.
If that works. Okay. And then we have the background check policy. Should this with you and kind of in the spirit of, you know, I've said this along the way, as we have things come up where there's something that puts something on our radar and, and we notice that it's in need of a, an update, this was one of them. So our current background policy is, is pretty comprehensive. Like many school districts, we run fingerprint checks, we run CORY checks, and those are the things that are required by law. And they provide us with good information that we can use to make determinations. We are advocating just some simple updates to the language in our background check policy based on the MAS C guidance, which is, it's just a really nice tool. They provide these model policies in part because they look at them and update them with an eye to the law every so often. And so one nice thing about adopting them is you know you're always in compliance with the law. So I'm offering this, here is kind of a first reading for you tonight to kind of take a look at, see if you have questions or concerns. And then, you know, we can put it on the docket for action item and a vote at a later meeting. I will say the addition of SORI is, is an interesting one. SORI is the sex offenders registry information that you can get in addition to the CORY check. Often there is just overlap, right? So felony convictions and even non-convictions show up on a CORY check most of the time. However, there may be certain circumstances where you could get additional information from a SORI that you couldn't on a CORY. And I think most importantly, that the fact of doing it and people knowing we do it is actually something of a deterrent. So there's some research about this, about doing staff development, doing types of background checks being helpful as a sort of protective factor. And given that we're in the business of having small children around, I'm, I'm happy to do anything we can to make sure that they are safe. So that's a good argument for doing it from my perspective.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a comment on that. I, I just want to make sure that we understand that this is just perhaps codifying additional measures we're taking. But they've really already been in play every, you know, you have, the SORI may be in addition. But theoretically, the CORY should pick up what the SORI picks up as well and in many ways. I think that one thing we need to understand is when there's not a conviction out there, it's not going to show up. And so we just have to be really mindful of the fact that some things were just, until somebody does something and they get picked up for it, it's not going to show up anywhere. And so there's no way of anyone knowing. So I, I just want to clarify that, that this, these are not new policies that are being instituted because of any particular reason. This is just, you know, more, the more we can do, the better.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think our, you know, I, I'm the one who like reviews and signs off on, on some of these when they, when there's anything that pops up on a, on a, on a CORY check. So I can tell you that it's a process the district takes very seriously. They're very rigorous about it. And, you know, we do it within the boundaries of the law, but we take it very much to heart. So. And, you know, obviously we want to make sure anybody who works with children and who is going to be around children is somebody who is safe to be around children.
Do any of you guys have any questions or comments around this?
I guess my only comment would be, is that we, when we adopt the MAS C policies, we, we are in concert with most of the rest of the state, number one. We in effect have free legal advice through that process, that's two. Limits our liability for any untoward thing that happens to us as a result. But most importantly, it's the best we can do, given the structure of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the sooner the better. So that's my comment.
So I, I read this whole thing and was like, I could never be a lawyer because there's so much detail here. But one thing that I guess I never really thought about, so we pay for each of these checks, right? Cause there was a dollar amount in there like for each of the checks.
So fingerprinting is a cost that the employees bear. I, I don't know. I don't think we reimburse for fingerprinting. Do we reimburse for fingerprinting? We don't, no. So if you want to get a job as a teacher, you get fingerprinted and you have to pay for it.
Okay. And I was, the thing that I was thinking about specifically is I know all of the volunteers go through CORY and now we'll go through this.
We'll run through SORI too.
Do we pay for all the volunteers in the schools to be CORY checked?
For, I, I don't think that it's a significant cost for CORY. I think it may be a subscription. I don't, I don't actually know what that.
Is it a per, I, I don't even know if it's a.
I don't think it's, I think it's, we're like a member or something. It's like more of that.
I thought it was $35 a person from this document, but like.
That, that is for fingerprinting and we don't fingerprint volunteers. So those are, teachers and, and teachers have to pay that themselves.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't paying for all of the CORYs, for all of the volunteers, because that would be expensive.
One other comment?
Sure.
And that is not only, it, it's basically for everybody that gets in and out of school buildings. But the most important one of them all is any contractor that's on school property, any employee for that contractor has to go through this process.
Yes.
And obviously if people are in and out, we know them. But, you know, a one-time event for construction or doing something that still requires every individual to be checked in this manner. And, and that's the most important thing for us.
The other thing is I think we need to, you know, we're working within the boundaries of what the law allows us to do. And there's a lot of, you know, privacy issues here. And so we're, we're limited to what we have and we do the best we can. And that's not just with respect to schools, but you know, when you talk about your contractors coming in and they're having to have be CORY checked. I mean, that's sort of the basic thing that we have, but it's the biggest thing that we have. And so, you know, I, I think some of this is legislation. But, you know, that's, that's what it comes down to is doing, working with what you have. So.
Yeah. No additional comments. So I'll just say thank you, Allison, for everything you do to keep the school safe. So.
Thank you.
Jerry, any comments? Okay. Alrighty.
I think one thing to note, and this may be to kind of what your earlier comment was, SORI. So SORI is something that a lot of districts hadn't done before because it wasn't mandated by DUCY. But more and more are starting to pick it up. And we're just, I think we are part of a, a group that's trending in that direction, just as, again, an added layer. So.
Excellent. Do you want to talk to us about the donations?
Sure. So we have two here. Let me pull them up. It's like late in the evening and I'm forgetting which one is which. All right. So this lovely donation for the Fail School, anonymous donation for books to sort of go along with the social emotional curriculum that they're using in K to three. So it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. So $2,000 to the Fail School. That's the first donation here. And those are, if you've seen, I, I've had a chance to see this both in the classroom setting, but also see Ms. Standard herself, the school principal, do some of these kind of grade level readings where the kids come down to the cafeteria and they do sort of a character education reading and have a conversation about it. And it's, it, they're, it's, I mean, it's skill building and it's also adorable if you ever get the chance to, to go see it. The second donation is a great one here. This is athletic equipment. So this is a memo from our athletic director, Levi Hansen. And we have an anonymous donor who is going to donate to the track program, an entire pole vault pit and kind of structure, which is a sizable, kind of has sizable monetary value. This is worth about $30,000. I think it's great. I used to run track and coach track back in the day and pole vaulters, we want to keep them safe. It is a very, it makes me nervous to even watch. The kids who did that when I was a kid, I was like, you know, I worried about them. I thought they were a little bit nuts, but, or very brave. But I think it's great to have up-to-date equipment for this. It's a, it's a wonderful and generous thing. So those are the two we have.
Excellent. Okay. So we'll, we'll vote on those later. Or actually, why don't we just vote on them now? Does anyone want to make a motion for both donations?
I would move that we vote to approve the donation for Fail School as well as the pole vault pit with gratitude.
Second?
All in, any, any discussion? Sorry. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, zero. Okay. The next item is going to be citizens' requests. I don't see anyone here for citizens' requests. And school committee reports. Steve?
Yeah, I guess I already made my comments about budget issues, I guess. So I'd just like to fill the committee in on the, on the three days last week in Hyannis for the MAS C conference, of which Allison and Sarah also attended. Generally, there are four or five presentations a day in those three days. My primary purpose there was to support the delegate convention, and I'll speak to that point in a minute. And the other is our Division Four group that represents basically Worcester County school committees in terms of the process and other programs that they have. It was like, that was lightly attended, but they're, they're trying to create, I guess, a more coordinated effort to reach us as school committee members in Division Four. And you will probably see some correspondence from the group soon in terms of the programs that they offer through the years. Because it actually is border to border, that is from New Hampshire to Rhode Island. Generally, when they do meet together, we meet in Marlboro. But because that's a difficult trek for some of the town's school committee members, you may be getting correspondence in regards to Zoom meetings as well for their programs. As far as the delegate convention, you may recall there was a limited number of items this year brought forward that would be recommended by the MAS C to the legislature. The only one that was new was a metabolic testing that school, schools are supposed to do for their students. And the request was to remove that from a requirement to do so in the future, because apparently nobody uses that data for anything. And it's a confusion for, for the schools to, to actually do the, the measurements and testing and to store that information for which is not used. Anyway, the convention voted almost unanimously to ask for it to be removed by vote of the legislature from the requirements of school systems. Another six items were those items that were previously voted and approved by the MAS C delegates over the past three years. Six items were timing out. They had all been voted in the past favorably. And so the request was of the, of the group to reinstate them to be resubmitted to the legislature for consideration. I didn't bring the pamphlet here, so I can't read to you what they were. But I think generally we supported them in the past when, when we voted in those years for the delegate convention. And I guess I would say that, you know, particularly for new school committee members, that the program is quite strong in trying to bring us all up to snuff, not only as far as communication between school districts and in your own district group, as well as between others from around the state. It was quite interesting. I sat down for, for lunch one day and one of the women who was getting a life membership to the MAS C sat down next to me. And it was a very lively discussion. She'd been there for almost forever. I'm starting to feel like I have been too. But at any rate, it's, it's a good experience. And if you get a chance to go and spend some time as others have in the past, I think you would find it rewarding. So that's my update.
Jane?
Nothing to report.
Tim?
Nothing to report. Did prepare for it. So last Thursday, we had Bandarum at the high school. And I'm not sure if any of you guys went, but that's always a great occasion. Auditorium was packed and I think it went pretty well. Fine arts program here in Westboro is pretty great. And this past weekend, we also had senior districts for all the fine arts programs. And I don't have a specific number, but I know a lot of my friends gone in. So that's another testament to some of the great extracurricular activities we have here at Westboro. On November 30th, we have the Christmas tree lighting event in Westboro, and that's always great. So yeah, they drive Santa and his like little sleigh and then there'll be hot cocoa. And so it's a great event. And the Westboro Fire Foundation is also doing their Jingle Bell Fun Run. So there's going to be a bunch of little kids there and it's always packed. It's great, great evening. Then on December 2nd, Wes, the Westboro Lions is doing a youth speech contest, which I think it's, usually you have a couple of minutes to prepare a speech about a topic. And if you win the Westboro contest, you move on to a regional contest. And eventually there's a state level contest. So something great if anyone's interested in doing that. Then on November 4th, Hastings is holding a book fair. December 4th, should crack five. And I will be using that pole vault mat because I do do pole vault at high school. So yes. Our, our coach is really great and supposed to be the best in the Eastern Seaboard, actually. We always take advantage of that. We send a lot of kids to the state meet every year. So really appreciate that donation from my pole vault coach.
I guess in terms of updates, I wasn't going to talk about this, but I, we, I also was able, fortunate enough to attend one session at the MAS C conference. It was an interesting session though, so I'm excited to share what I learned there. The speaker, it was about AI. And the speaker there was, interestingly, there was, I guess, a lot of the districts had questions around developing a policy. And he, he stated that actually the recommendation that they have is to not develop a policy right now because it is such a fast-changing thing that they're worried that if you develop a policy, it's going to be outdated in the next five months. And so it wouldn't be wise to do that. And it was similar to sort of the conversations we had here, which I thought was interesting, that he really did feel as though it should be classroom-based and, you know, sort of everyone needs to figure it out. So it was interesting to hear that. He also, you know, talked about the weaknesses of AI with it not being inclusive of minorities and how we have to get there. It's the very beginning of this and it's definitely not ready for that yet. He did an exercise where he gave all of us little M and M bags, which was interesting. And he asked AI how many M and M's were going to be in the bag? And AI was wrong. Yeah, because everyone had a different amount, actually. And he asked, you know, if each of the colors were represent, you know, were the equal amount of each color. AI was wrong again. So he was trying to demonstrate that, you know, it has its limitations and that, you know, it should not be dependent upon in any, in any event. And so I thought it was really interesting. But the most important thing that I felt that I got from that was around whether or not it's wise to do, for the school districts to be developing a policy around this right now. And I thought that that was really, I'm glad that he talked about that because he just, you know, I think, so clearly everyone's grappling with this and some may be ahead of others. But certainly everybody's trying to navigate and figure out how to, to work with this. And I think he's, you know, he was just acknowledging that that's just where we are and we have to go through that process. And then we'll land somewhere. And at that point, we can talk about, you know, how you want to address this in terms of a policy. But right now, everybody just needs to, to work on it classroom by classroom. So it was an interesting piece, but that, that's all I have to report.
Interesting. I don't know if you want to chime in about update. We're, we're sort of coming off the full day PD day. One of the things Matt's done is regrouped with our AI working group to talk about next steps and sort of where, you know, where are we going and what are we going to do? And I think we're, we're just grappling with all of it right now.
Yeah, it kind of parallels exactly what you just said, where our teachers, curriculum leaders, administrators are trying to wrap their heads around how to navigate this and how to support innovation at the same time, make sure that student learning is authentic. And we've kind of used the expression, we can, you know, do, do two things at the same time, walk and chew gum. So we can make sure that students are not using it for cheating, but also continue to innovate because there is some power there for differentiation as well as just creativity. So that's some opportunities for innovation. We've been trying to solicit ideas from teachers and from the faculty and then working with outside groups to provide some innovation grants.
Yeah, he also touched upon early education, which is also an interesting piece of this, that he was, he mentioned that there's actually studies that show that it doesn't hinder, AI doesn't, it, I mean, I can't imagine that the studies are yet fully developed, but whatever is out there, that it does not actually hinder the capability of children to develop critical thinking skills. I mean, I, I think like I would have, at this point, I don't know much about it in that way. And I don't think there's enough data out there yet because it's still something that is relatively new.
The one thing I will add, and it's important for public meeting and for parents, especially to be aware, on a school side, if students use open platform, large language models like ChatGPT, they do not comply with data privacy laws, specifically COPA. However, Google platform such as Gemini or Notebook LM do comply. So we've been working with our tech department to identify which types of AI models comply with student privacy agreements that we must adhere to. So we're, we're kind of navigating all of these different apps and tools that keep emerging to make sure that they're, that they're safe for student use.
Yeah, while also trying to manage, you know, honestly, our educators put so much time into what they do that we really don't want to be giving them a whole lot more to have to do than what they already have to manage. And I think that that's the most challenging part of what's happening here is, you know, we hear different things that are happening, happening with teachers mandating that students do certain work in the classroom. I mean, it's, you know, how do you police this? And how, what is the extent to which it needs to be policed? And these are, I think, all things that are still yet to be completely figured out. And so in the interim, I think what he was encouraging was let it go through that process and let teachers figure it out with the students and it'll all, you know, and I think as it develops as well, because it's still, it's relatively beginning stages that it'll all fall in place.
Absolutely. We've, you know, one of, a couple of the things that came out were teachers feeling like they needed more, more professional development. So more of that. I, I actually went to one of the, I went to two different AI workshops down at the conference and one of them I thought was exceptional. And the work that, that this particular individual was doing, I thought it's incredibly relevant for teachers, but also for leaders. And so it's somebody I'm going to bring in to work with a leadership team on uses of generative AI in terms of your workflow. And how do you kind of, what are some ways we might kind of do this to model for teachers, ways to be more productive? Because I think for, for teachers, their capacity to sort of incorporate it into their own planning will help them get comfortable with figuring out how to use it with kids. Our keynote speaker on that day did a great job sort of modeling that, showing how, you know, if you want to differentiate instruction, you know, before AI, he was able to do a couple of different things in the classroom at once. But with the addition of AI, with very little kind of, with a light lift for him, he was able to provide a lot more options for students in terms of interacting with content. So it's a guy who's a physics and astronomy teacher.
So I think. Having the conversation too. I, I really appreciate that you had the professional development, that the work group is continuing to meet and just having the conversation with the students, the teachers, you know, faculty, staff, talking about uses for efficiencies. Like it, it starts to normalize and help us talk, you know, together with students and among the staff about safe use and normalizing the use of it. Because the students have to be able to use AI. Our teachers, we should want them to because it will make their, them more efficient and able to innovate. And so this taboo, I feel like we've already in Westboro moved from, because of the professional development and your efforts from, you know, I think there was a lot of fear, right? And now we're already making these strides. So I really appreciate that. And it sounds like other systems are in the same place. But it's like ground zero for like moving at warp speed. So it's, it's hard to, I'm glad we don't have these hard and fast policies like Sarah said.
I think, I, I think we're not ready. And I, I do think we're in an interesting moment where, you know, by and large part, the, the company is developing these things. They're not, they don't care about child development. They don't care about whether kids learn or not. They don't care about harm, right? They care about money. And there's not a lot of kind of, there's not, there aren't good guardrails out there. So I think schools have this interesting dual role right now where we have to both help teachers and kids sort of navigate this, this universe and learn how to use it and be effective and be really watchful about when and how guardrails are needed. Like we're, we're going to have to sort of figure that out because I don't think anybody else is going to do it. So I think that's, that's the interesting place, the sort of tension in the whole thing. And I will say, I think some of the caution from educators here comes from a really deep, deep commitment to student learning.
Yeah. Well, the easiest thing is to not care. So it's, you know, we really appreciate how much the faculty care and it's extra work to police this. It really is. It's extra work to have everything handwritten.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, I mean, I really appreciate all the time and thought that you're putting into it.
Can I comment on just one thing that Steve brought up with the budget, which just as a point about K to three redistricting? Which is, so our consultant will be back next meeting to share an update at that time. But the, the team that's working with us, they did,